It's 5 o'clock. At this time, I'd like to call the meeting of the Belton Independent School District Board of Trustees to order. A quorum of board members is present. This meeting has been duly called and a notice of the meeting has been posted in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code, Chapter 551. Before we rise for our moment of silent prayer or meditation, I would like to acknowledge the passing of our beloved Joe M. Pirtle, who was a superintendent for Belton ISD for 22 years. At this time, I'd like to pause and let any board member who wish to just have some comments on that. Go ahead.
Obviously, you know, the news yesterday, when I heard, it was pretty tough. Joe's a guy that I've known my whole life, so... And when I was a little kid, I hung out a lot with my grandmother and over here in Belton and stuff. And I never knew what Joe was, but I knew he was important because every time we saw him, my grandmother would walk me over and say, "You need to shake this man's hand." And then as I grew older, I learned what Joe was. And so, I knew him as Joe Pirtle, the B.I.S.D. person. And then when I married my wife, I joined the Church of Christ here in Belton, and he was an elder at our church. And I got to know him as the spiritual Joe Pirtle as well. I can't think of a finer human being and a more selfless example of dedication. But the thing about Joe and what he did here in Belton was he had a love affair with this district. It wasn't just a job to him. It was love. And that example and all those years of leadership, in my opinion, has set us up for the dedicate for the for what we have today, the modern era of Belton ISD. I attribute that to Joe and what he did and that true love that he had for each kid. And I'm gonna miss that big old voice. I'm gonna miss that big old bear claw, that big old hand and put it on your shoulder and... But I know heaven was a better place yesterday than it was the day before. We're gonna miss him.
Thank you. I would just echo what Mr. Taggart just said. He certainly was and very fondly remembered as a Belton icon. It was, as was demonstrated in a letter that I just received about him, he certainly will be remembered, and we certainly thank him for his legacy. And our thoughts and prayers are with his family. At this time...
Mr. Pirtle had a tremendous influence on me as a kid. I remember him being around all through the years I was in elementary, junior high, and high school.
It's pushed. It's on. Go ahead.
In any event, I'm gonna echo some of what Tony was saying, but Mr. Pirtle was Belton. He was all Belton. He loved this place. And I would tell him whenever I'd see him, I'd say, "Mr. Pirtle, when you, when I hear your voice, I start to listen." Because he always had, he was always very insightful, always, always gave me some great advice, and always acknowledged me at all times, no matter where I was. And I really appreciated that. And he was, he loved Belton High School, loved the students when he was superintendent. He would come and speak at our pep rallies, and I tell you, he'd always, he'd always get us going. Well, he, I wanted to put the hat on right then and start hitting somebody whenever I heard him speak. So, he loved, he loved Belton football and loved this community, and he's gonna be missed.
Thank you. Seeing no further comments, please rise for a moment of silent prayer or meditation. Please join me in a pledge to the American flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And now the Texas. I'm gonna start our meeting with a board workshop. Our presenters are going to go in this order. We'll have a bond sale update by Jennifer Ritter, and then we'll have a bond projects update by Jared Sturgendur, and a compensation survey by Todd Schiller, and then Jennifer Land will talk to us about the budget. And we'll go in that order. We'll start with our bond sale update. Good evening. Welcome back.
Thank y'all very much. I hope I don't mess anything up. Okay, so we sold bonds just under two weeks ago to close out your 2017 authorization. Again, as a reminder, back in May of 2017, the voters approved just under $150 million. And we had prior to this had sold $130 million back in August of 2017. So this was for the remaining 19.7 million, call it, call it 20 million to finish out all of your projects. The voters were told originally there'd be a tax increase up to 18.69 cents to close out this $149.7 million project. Ultimately, we actually only came in at 16.3 cents as a high point, and I think we have some better news to share with you about how that might get a little bit better. So, the new issuance was projected upfront to allow us to continue lowering that tax rate. Prior to the sale, Standard &amp; Poor's affirmed your AA- bond rating, but you actually did sell with the AAA guarantee of the permanent school fund, state-of-Texas guarantee. So you sold at the best interest rate and a great time in the market as well to have your bonds well-received. So, as I mentioned, we sold on Tuesday, April 30th, through a competitive method. This is a little bit different. Prior to this sale, we've always sold through what's called a negotiated method, where we select the underwriters in advance and work with them to structure the best deal for the market. Because this issue was a little bit smaller than what you may typically sell, and because it was a little bit of a shorter term, as we discussed a couple of months ago, we traditionally sell 30-year bonds for your new construction projects to kind of match up the useful life. But because the market was so good, and because we had an opportunity in this case to shorten that term and save on interest costs for the taxpayers, we actually were able to shorten it up to 21 years and still be a little bit better in terms of the tax rate that the voters were told. So again, we dropped it from 30 years to 21-year payout. And as a result of that, with this competitive method, which again is kind of like eBay for bonds, we say on a certain date and time, underwriters across the United States, we would like to see what your best bid is, and don't know who they are. It's a blind bidding system. They come in with an interest rate, and assuming that it meets all the criteria, we'd simply come to you and say, "Firm so-and-so had the lowest interest rate. We would recommend approval of them." So typically, on a good day, we'll get eight bids or so. In your case, we received 13 bids. So it was quite a good day in the market and kind of sought to prove as well that your finance team and the administration here was, was in a good position to be able to do that type of sale and made the right decision on your behalf. And then as well as you can see here, the spread between the high and the low bid, which I'll show you, was 16 basis points. And what that means is that the, the winning bidder was a whole 16 basis points off of the losing bidder, or .16%. Kind of where, why we point that out is because your, your losing bidder in this case, or the last place bidder, was JP Morgan Securities, they actually had the $130 million transaction. They did a good job on the $130 million transaction that we sold back in 2017, but this is simply to say that every day in the market, we don't know who's going to be the most aggressive with their capital. So when we can do these competitive sales, because in this case, we weren't up against the 50 cent cap, we had a lot of room to be able to maneuver this without having to restructure, so we had that option. But this goes to show that every firm is a little bit more aggressive every day in the market. So we were actually able to find a firm, which I was joking with Ms. Land, that we haven't, I haven't worked with in the past, but our firm has. But they're a relatively new firm out of Atlanta called IFS Securities. We did our diligence and made sure they had the money, for sure, to underwrite this transaction. But they came in, as you can see here, at a 2.77%. So extremely low. You can see that the cover bid there, or what we call the, the second bid, was Bank of America. So you actually had quite a bit of interest from, from Wall Street firms, Bank of America, Citigroup, Bank of New York, and JP Morgan. There was quite a bit of, of interest from those big Wall Street investment banks, but you can see the little guy in this case actually just said, "Hey, we're gonna be more aggressive. We're trying to build our business, and we'd like to have this Belton ISD paper to sell to our investors." They have a lot of retail investors, meaning sort of individuals as opposed to mutual funds and insurance companies. So they were the most aggressive in the market. They provided what's called a good faith check, which said, for some reason, if they can't deliver, we have these funds on hand already, so you're in good shape. And like I said, we did our due diligence, but they came in at a very low interest rate. For comparison purposes, and again, it's not apples to apples because the market is better, and this is a smaller issue, and it's 21 years as opposed to the 30 years that we sold back in 2017, but this is a 2.77, and in 2017, we were 3.86. And at that time, that was a really good interest rate. So that just goes to show, one, the aggressiveness here of the firm's bidding, as well as the market improving and having that term go from 30 to 21 years, is saving you quite a bit of money. So congratulations on that. And if they had, if they didn't have faith in Belton ISD, we wouldn't have 13 bids. So that's a credit to you all. So, too small for anybody to really see. You do have it in front of you. But what I want to point out here on this spreadsheet, just as a reminder, when we went out in 2017, and Dr. Kinkanen can correct me if I'm wrong, but we told the voters this whole bond project of the 149.7 would come in at an ultimate tax rate, because at the time, you were 27 cents before the election on your INS portion of the tax rate. We told the voters we were coming in, hopefully, a little bit below 46 cents. Well, two things happened. We did better on the interest rate than we anticipated. Again, we don't set this up to make ourselves look good. It just works out that way, and we're always conservative, so we can be a little better. In this case, it just worked out in our favor with the timing. But the other thing that happened is that we had projected, back when we talked to you a couple of months ago, in terms of what the tax base would grow, a 7% growth rate in the tax base, which kind of lined up with where you had been growing. Well, Ms. Land got the preliminary figures, and your tax base is projected to grow next year at about 16.5%. So that's a huge increase on the tax base, which means that ultimately, assuming that doesn't change and the legislature doesn't do something that might impact this one way or the other, instead of having to be the 41 cents that I told you two months ago that we were hoping to levy or be a little bit better than, which is again, a two cent, two and a half cent decrease over where you currently are, we'll actually be coming in at about 37.5 cents. So a pretty big drop in terms of where that tax rate is. And that's a little bit, again, with the shorter term, we're still able to lower it that quickly. So, our goal is not to lower it as fast as we can. We always want to have the ability to have capacity for future projects, should you need them with the next election. But it just, it is what it is with the interest rate and the tax base growth, you're in a position to, to be able to lower that.
That is good news. Thank you.
Yes, absolutely.
Appreciate that. Appreciate hearing that.
And then, last slide here.
Just to make sure everyone understands that, would, when we adopt a tax rate in August is when we might expect to have a final number on that end, a drop for the school district on the INS side?
Yes, yes. Exactly. Correct. It's not final until, the, the bond numbers are final, but the only piece of it that we're missing, of course, is the final certified value from the appraisal district.
Correct.
Which will be when you adopt your tax rate this summer. Yes?
Thank you for, thank you for saying that. We, we have preliminary values, and those have fluctuated a little bit already as things are, are different in the county this year. So we're, that 16.5 that you, that Jennifer has shown there may or may not hold by the time we get to certified value. So it's fluid right now until we get there.
That's right. Yeah.
But it, but the increase in values will definitely help us on our debt service side. And that will be in July. Yes. Thank you.
And again, that fourth bullet there, the legislature could impact the tax base growth. You know, we'll, we'll see what, what happens as far as the final bill that comes out in terms of that. So, you know, knock on wood, this will stay pretty close to where it is now. The bond issue will close on May 29th. That's when you'll have the funds delivered to Belton ISD, and you can start spending on projects. And then again, as a reminder, we will have an odd first payment. In this fiscal year, we'll have an August 15th payment from your existing fund balance. And the reason that we're doing that is under state law, to qualify for state assistance in the form of the existing debt allotment, which you currently receive on your existing bond issues, to qualify for that immediately rather than waiting until the next biennium in 2021. If we have a payment prior to August 31 of this year, which is the state's fiscal year end as well, we immediately qualify for the next two years for that state assistance on EDA. So that's why we're having that odd first payment, is to make sure that Belton ISD taxpayers get that state assistance there as well. So happy to answer any questions. Congratulations. The sale turned out to be even much better than we had anticipated and hoped for, and we're, we're certainly honored to be able to close out this exciting project, obviously, for Belton ISD, and happy to help as needed.
Sam, could you elaborate just a little bit more about, you mentioned eight bids is what you normally see as close to 13 that you just received. Can you elaborate a little bit more on why that would be?
So, I, I think it was kind of a perfect storm of a couple of factors. One would be timing. The May bond elections hadn't yet occurred when we priced, so as of May going forward, we'll see other districts that passed quite a bit of bond authorization and will be selling in the market. But when we priced, in April, there wasn't a lot of competing ISD bond sales in terms of Texas. Having that permanent school fund guarantee and making your bond issue a AAA is very attractive. I mean, as, anybody can read the papers and see that there's a lot happening globally in terms of financial markets, what we call a flight to quality, where people are looking to put their money in what they consider to be a quality investment. So a AAA guarantee with a district like Belton ISD is considered to be a very safe investment for investors, and that's where they were looking to put their money. So, having the market to ourselves that day, and by the way, that's a credit to you all, doing that delegation pricing that we did, where you said delegate to the superintendent and to the finance director to price on the best day in the market, allowed us to do that, by the way, I should point that out. So having the market to ourselves essentially, as well as having that, that strong credit rating that you carry, and then having a good tone in the market really just, you know, went to the fact that there's a lot of demand for this type of bond. And this is, on that point as well, they're not, most of them are actually not Texas-based firms, interestingly enough. They're, they're firms all across the country, so they, they did their research on Belton ISD and found out it was a good place to put their money.
I just want to say thank you for everybody who worked on this, right? I mean, and, and thank you for bringing the idea forward, you know, to do something differently. You know, clearly there's, I think maybe we manufactured some of this success, but, but thank you to everybody who, who worked on it, because it's, it's gonna mean a lot to a fast-growth school district for what we can do. Yeah.
Yeah, and that's an extremely good point, and I second the thank yous to, to working with the administration and them being willing to try something a little bit different. But I think when we originally looked at this proposal, and Dr. Kinkanen can, you know, certainly correct me if I'm wrong, but we thought we might be eating up your capacity for, you know, the next 20 years if we didn't have the growth in the tax base and the low interest rates that we got. So by getting this low interest rate through, you know, a couple of different things that you were able to do, you actually now have created a capacity again, so when you need it, you can go out and borrow more money.
And that's good news, because we're going to continue to grow and need additional schools in the future. Thank you, Jennifer.
Thank you, Jennifer. Appreciate you bringing us good news as always. Okay, Mr. Jared, you're up next. Can I talk about our 2017 bond project update?
Yes, ma'am, where we've been spending the money. So, first one, Charter Oak Elementary School. So we brought this to you last time, and we were just about to reach substantial completion, and we had worked through the change order, and I'm pleased to show not only photos here of the, the progress before, up to that point, but then as well here into the final. And so we were able to achieve substantial completion on the project on April 18th is the day that we, we've identified. And so over that, the period, and actually, a week from today, we'll be going out and checking the punch list, making sure all the items are checked off, and reaching final completion of the project. So it's definitely an exciting time of, we'll actually be able to wrap this one up. The district has gone through the furniture procurement process several months back, so the furniture will be delivered and give us lots of time, give you all lots of time, really, to move into the school. We're working through a few final little details on this one in terms of the funding, but it looks like there will be some money returned at the end of the day from the project, so coming in a little bit under budget, which is a good thing from that standpoint, so... But Claude Construction did a great job here in wrapping it up and moving forward, so...
We were out there about a week or so ago, Dr. Kinkanen and I, and, man, some of that furniture, well, all of it is cool, but the purple ottoman kind of things, and, you know, I, I got to live in the world of Dr. Kinkanen, and she dreamed about her days of being a teacher, because we moved around bookshelves and had some ideas. That was fun.
I was, yes, I was definitely seeing how they were gonna fit in the classroom. Thank you.
Looking really good out there.
Thank you. So then, of course, then Lake Belton High School. So this one has been continuing on in construction, so here are some of the early photos, and kind of, the progress will feel like it's slowing down, but a lot of it is actually happening inside the building here. So here you see images of the exterior skin going on, the steel going up, and of course, many of y'all were able to participate then in the beam signing. So the last piece of structural steel has been put in place from the superstructure. They're starting to put on decking onto the building, and then continue the exterior envelope on this one. So here you see shots on the inside. So we had talked that really from May until December, and then December, January through March, they had finished about 20% and another 20% of the project. Now they're reaching 50% of the project. So they're about 48% complete as of March. So they are cranking along on this one. So a lot of it is on the interior of the building from the MEP trades. We're starting to see the MEP envelope come onboard as well. So here you'll see the, the pictures, you'll see kind of in the bottom center there, the blue with the studs on the outside, that's the framing that will start being for the metal panels. So we'll actually start feeling like the actual school is coming together. They're getting windows in place, and then the white is actually some of the Tyvek material to actually kind of wrap up the building and really close it off. So Bartlet Cock's doing an amazing job here. We are talking, we're almost 13 months to the day to finish, to finishing all of this one up, but we're already starting to talk about furniture moving in, what that looks and feels like, because the year's gonna go just like that along the way. So we need to make sure that we're gearing up for that 2020, 2021 school year, which is, you know, a year away at this point. But on this one, we are seeing some good savings here along the way, and now that we're completed with the superstructure of the building, we are pursuing, pulling forward some of the alternates on the project. So the greenhouse we had originally designed, and as well as we're looking at a second auto tech facility here that would, we would be able to use the owner contingency, it will be the owner contingency. Bartlet Cock has identified about $2.5 million they're gonna be able to push into that contingency. So we'll see that come through here pretty quick, an exciting opportunity to be able to already expand on the campus and the offerings here for Lake Belton High School.
So we reviewed the, excuse me, we reviewed the list of items that we've rejected, is that the right word? Jared, that we rejected when we were working through pricing of the school, and now that we are at this point, we've gone back and had a conversation about what we might want to include with those additional monies. And the auto tech facility, the addition of the auto tech facility is one that we think would be good, because it would allow us to not have to share the current facility, and we feel like we'll want that in the long run someday down the road anyway. And this would be a good time to go ahead and do it. And the greenhouse was also a project that we identified to move forward with for our CTE program.
So the one we just finished, the auto, was it like 1.6?
1.4, I believe.
For construction costs, that's correct.
And so we would, Jared would go back and design a facility similar to that, however, with some tweaks. Now that we're living in it, we have the opportunity to improve if there's anything that we want to make better for that facility. So I, you guys have any opinion of that? We appreciate your feedback on moving forward with those projects.
Now, I know we've talked about, and kiddingly so, about how Jill is going to maneuver from hallway to hallway. Did we get her a limousine to drive through each hallway? No, she needed a limousine.
Can't pay for that with bond funds.
Okay, okay. All righty.
I do, I do want to thank Dr. Kinkanen, though, for that, that beam signing ceremony. It was so special and symbolic and really forward-thinking, because this high school really is a combining of communities that's somehow different a little bit than all the other schools we've built in the Temple City Limits. This, this is a big deal, and I feel like it was symbolic of bringing all our communities together as we grow and change and evolve and, and kind of become something new and exciting. And so I think that was just a perfect ceremony to commemorate what we're doing here. Thank you.
Thank you, and special thanks to Elizabeth and her staff, and Bartlet Cock, who made that possible. And it was, it will be one of my favorite events of all time. It was fantastic. Thank you for that.
Great. So then, the last one that we wanted to touch base on is the Belton High School Orchestra Edition. So one finished construction, one is in the midst, and the third one is, we're talking about starting construction here soon. So last month, we had brought to you schematic design, and we've in essence fast-tracked this one. We talked a little bit about schedule, so we've completed design development. We're setting up review meetings with the district to make sure we got all the parts and pieces. Ultimately, we're targeting May 30th for completing those drawings. And that's really setting up the timeframe to get bid day in, so we're talking three weeks later on June 20th. In essence, so we can hit a little bit of the 2019 summer for construction. So you'll see kind of, the last three ones are really about substantial completion of the road or the drive in front of Belton High School, so that parents have a smooth transition come day one of school. Then a day to start band hall renovations next summer, and then ultimately, the final project completed in July of next summer in time for band season and orchestra season, really, to start up that fall to support the high school. What's gonna be key to that is there, you'll see the third line is July is, towards the end of June or early July, we would like to request a special board meeting to be able to go through the bids that we've received and maximize that window from board approval of the contract to first day of school for construction from that timeframe. So we had tentatively started looking at June 25th in the morning, to be confirmed with the board and the administration along the way.
So we did talk about June 25th. We could do that however you all liked, a quick, easy meeting in the morning, or a lunch meeting, or an afternoon meeting, depending on your schedules and your preferences. And we would just need a quorum present for that. So I know summers can be, summer can be a challenging time with vacations, but we've targeted that date to keep the work moving.
And that'll be contingent on the board selecting a construction delivery method this evening as well.
June 25th? Okay. Do you have a preference on morning or noon or evening? Morning? 8 o'clock? 8:30? 8 o'clock? Okay. 8 o'clock, June 25th? All right. Thank you.
Great. And with that, that's the construction update at this point. So, lot, lot happening, and we've got a lot of teams still out there reviewing everything, and looking forward to starting another project here in construction.
Thank you, Jared.
Just real quick, you know, being in the construction business for years, the architect was always kind of the one we were always up against, and it's been so refreshing to be on your side this time, and, and you're doing just such a great job, honestly.
Thank you.
It's to kind of have a little bit of understanding of what really goes on behind the scenes and to see how you guys just stepped through this, and you just get better and better with each project. I mean, you're really doing a good job.
Thank you very much. We, we try.
Okay. Does anyone else have any questions or comments? Thank you, Jared. Appreciate you. All righty. Next up, we'll have Todd giving us compensation, compensation survey and health insurance rates.
Good evening, Mr. Todd Schiller. How are you?
Good evening. How are you all? Well, I'd like to start off today, you have a copy of the, the survey information in your packet. I don't intend to go through the slide, go through it slide by, slide, but do want to provide you a brief overview of the process, and then, you know, how we analyze the data and, and the findings that we, that we had. So first of all, you know, we conduct this, this survey annually. It's part of the Texas Association of School Boards, TASB, survey process. And it comes out in the fall. We respond and get the information back in January. The data is, the results are received in January, and we start to analyze the data, try to interpret kind of where we, where we, where we sit in the market. The survey includes a comparison of teachers at 0, 5, 10, 15, and 20 years of experience. We also look at a comparison of all other positions along with their We also look at a comparison of all other positions along with their, their minimum salary, the maximum salary, the average paid with key positions across, across the comparison district. The comparison districts are Temple, Bryan, College Station, Copper's Cove, Georgetown, Colleen, Midway, and Waco. That's our eight district comparisons that we compare ourselves against. Again, we collect for the, all of the other positions outside of the teachers. We look at the men, maximum and average salary paid and duty days. Because as you all know, duty days varies different on, depending on the type of positions that we have in place. When we look at positions, we look at the, the comparison into the midpoint. And so we look at the, where we, where we are with the market median. And we try to be at 90% or above within, within the market median. So when you take all of our positions, determine the median salary, we want to be at 90% of the market median across all, all other districts. When you look at our professionals and administrators, we're at that. Our teacher pay is, is fairly strong compared to our surrounding comparison districts. Our professional salaries, administrative salaries is at least 92% or above in all of those categories. Our struggles this year have focused mainly along our paraprofessional and auxiliary individuals. Our entry level salaries for those positions is a concern for us. Where, even though we're at 90, 90% or above in all of those areas, when you look at those positions, something that's different for us is we contribute to Social Security and TRS, which is about 14% of an individual's salary. And so that's not seen in all districts. We're one of 11 districts in the state of Texas that actually contributes to Social Security. So that's, that's, while it's a long-term benefit to the employees, it is a struggle for them, for those lower entry level workers. And that includes positions like our custodians, food service workers, bus monitors, all of those entry level positions and even up to our educational aides is, has been a concern and challenge for us over the, over the course of this year. Just retention and competitiveness with other districts. You can make in the same, the same salary in another district, but because of that social security contribution, your take home pay is going to be less. So that's a concern for us.
But that's for non-certified employees, correct?
That's for non-certified employees.
And that is as a result of a, what we call a 218 agreement that's been in place for many years. It's an agreement that we can't get out of. And there, like Todd said, just a, a small number of school districts in the state that are under that. It was a decision that was made many years ago by the school district and would take some legislative action to change. Austin ISD is actually one of the districts that also pays into Social Security. And, you know, so Todd's exactly right. It does impact our employees.
Yeah, it's a, and it's a big challenge for, for us.
Question, if you don't mind, you know, when I was looking through all this, you know, to me, when you get to that, this level that you, where your concerns are, to me, it's, it's not, maybe you can compare teacher salaries and that makes sense to me. But when you're in these hourly positions, you need to compare the job market, not other districts. And I think that's where we need to check to see, you know, hourly positions, entry level positions. That's where the comparison ought to be, what the marketplace has maybe.
And that was going to be my next point too. So when you compare ourselves with other school districts, it does look like we're in 90% or above in the market median. But you know, with those positions, we're competing against the Buc-E's. We're competing against Scott &amp; White. We're presenting across, across any organization that's, that's, that hires individuals with those skill sets. You know, educational aides can go to work or secretarial position at Scott &amp; White. It's, it's, that's our market. Our market's much broader when we look at those individuals. So we know there's a need there and there's a, there's a focus that we need to have with all those entry level positions and including our substitutes too. Substitutes have been a challenge for us this school year as well. All of that being said, there, there's a lot of uncertainty in what may happen legislatively, legislatively to give us support with raises. So we're constantly watching that, kind of listening, keeping our ears open to figure out what's going to happen. At the point that something does happen, there's going to be a lot of decisions that need to be made to turn, you know, once we figure out, you know, what, if any type of relief we're going to get, we're going to have to make a lot of decisions in terms of paraprofessional auxiliary pay. And then to keep up with our surrounding districts in terms of what they may be doing once, once the decision's made as well. Any questions about the compensation survey? And then I'll, I'll touch a little bit on health insurance rates that were received. So we did get our health insurance rates as well. It's also in your packet. There is one, one change I'd make on that with some new information that we received that the employee children coverage underneath Scott &amp; White, it references 6%, I think in your packet, it's actually a 3% decrease from a 6% decrease to a 3% decrease. And so just, just know that. So all of our Scott &amp; White plans, which encompasses about 15, about 50% of our 1,177 individuals that are covered with health insurance, will receive a 3% deduction within those Scott &amp; White plans, assuming they were on those same plans for the upcoming school year. Our ETNA, I call it the high deductible plan. That's the first plan there at the top of the, of the chart. That's the, that's the least expensive plan. It's a plan with higher deductibles. We have about 40% of our individual, covered individuals on that plan. So between the Scott &amp; White plan and that, you're looking at 90% of our 1,177 employees covered between those two plans. The ETNA high deductible plan will increase approximately 3%. So while Scott &amp; White's decreasing 3%, the ETNA plan, high deductible plan for the other 40% of individuals will, will increase 3%. Depending on the other plans that you're on, it could be as high as 9%, depending on where you fall. And I can't recall a time over the course, since 2011 TRS Active, being Ontario Active Care, that we've actually seen a decrease in any plans. I think we saw a little bit of a decrease when we left the Blue Cross Blue Shield and doing our own negotiation between plans and joined TRS Active Care. I think there was a little bit decreased there at that time. But ever since then, we've gone up in health plan increases. And I was just looking, just a little bit ago at our family coverage currently. The average family coverage is $1,300. Back in 2011 when we joined, it was approximately $700. So you can, you can see the, the cost increase over the years for that. And this is important because this is, this is a big hit for our employees, especially the paraprofessional and auxiliary employees that we talked about.
And I don't know if y'all do this in your training with, with the employees, but we found out the hard way, we'd always been Scott &amp; White, my wife here in Belton ISD. And when my son moved off to Lubbock, he had got a concussion and they took him to a hospital and we found out we were out of network. Do y'all tell people that that happens?
We tell individuals kind of what that network look at and there's actually, we actually, because it's hard to, it's hard to encompass every, because it's about doctors and who, whatever doctors may be in those networks. And now Scott might be a little bit different, but a lot of times we'll tell the individual because there may be some doctors like in that, a high deductible plan that are part of that network, network. But then other doctors at the same organization, they're not, that are not part of that network. So we, we drive individuals to make sure that they're a pervert physician as part of the network and we drive them to a website where they can, where they can check that information as well.
And that was one of the reasons we moved to TRS Active Care was to give our employees choice of health insurance provider that met their needs because they have individual medical needs and their kids are in college. And so there's, there's some options available to them. The downside is you can't get out of it.
You can't leave once you join.
Once you're in, but it's really good news that the rates, we have some lower rates this year and that we have not seen. So we're pleased by that.
Yep. That's the, that's the health insurance information. Any questions?
Any further discussion or comments?
So basically, I know y'all are in a, in a waiting period because House Bill 3 from the House gives you extra money, but it doesn't put as big of a requirement on what the raise is going to be, where the Senate version puts a $5,000 across the board. So really waiting for this thing to finally figure out what's going to happen, I know it's nerve wracking, isn't it?
And, and from my understanding and listening, the, the Senate bill is the one that's doing the $5,000 for teachers and librarians.
Teachers and librarians. The other one gives you flexibility.
I think it was like $1,800 across the board, every employee. So it's really kind of hard to develop scenarios when there's so much uncertainty out there in terms of what's going to happen. Yep.
Anyone else? Thank you, Todd. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
All right. So next we'll have a budget update by Ms. Jennifer Lynn.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So I think between Jennifer Ritter and Todd, I could go sit down right now. They talked a lot of, a lot about what I plan to touch on briefly. As usual, we always create the budget with priorities in mind and set, the primary priority is to support academic achievement. That's what our budget really is geared toward. All of the other priorities support that and they help to educate our children. On April 25th, we received preliminary values from the Bell County Appraisal District. And there is a new chief appraiser in town and he has implemented some changes. So as a result, we have seen some significant increases in our preliminary values. And this chart is from preliminary values in 2018, which is our 2019 fiscal year, compared to the preliminary net taxable value of 2019, which is the 2020 fiscal year. As you can see, there was an increase of over $600 million in the next net taxable value. I'm sure that you all have heard about the increases that have been noticed throughout the Bell County region. We also saw a similar increase in terms of our tax, our frozen values. And we don't want to get too far ahead of this increase because as Jennifer stated and Dr. Kinkanen stated earlier, these values are subject to change. They could go up, they could go down. We are in the first year with our new chief appraiser and he did express that there was some conservatism in these numbers, but we still won't know for certain until we move forward. So this chart compares preliminary values to certified values in previous years. We look at this, but again, since we have a new appraiser, we want to continue to, to chart this information for the next several years so we can see if a similar trend will hold. Because in prior years, we do usually see a slight increase from preliminary values to certified values. But we just don't, we, we know that it's subject to change at this point. So we're going to continue to monitor what increases or decreases we see in terms of preliminary and certified values. And hopefully that will help, help us better predict or anticipate what we can expect in the future. So I know you were just briefly talking about House Bill 3. At this point in the year, after we've received preliminary values, I'm usually standing here talking about some more solid revenue numbers. But this year is a little bit different because our legislature has been given the notice that there is a surplus that's going to be available for the next biennium. And with that surplus, we expected to see some relief in terms of the school finance system. But we're having some challenges with the House as well as the Senate getting on the same page. But I thought I wanted to, I wanted to just show you some of the things that were in House Bill 3. And then in the next slide, I'll compare, or shall I say contrast, the differences between House Bill 3 and the Senate bill version or the Senate version. Basically, House Bill 3 provided some overall relief of about $6.3 billion infused in the system for the next biennium. A large portion of that, they wanted to pass on to school districts in the basic allotment. And by increasing the basic allotment by almost eight, by $890, that is one way to ensure that all school districts are, they really benefit from an increase in the basic allotment. And next, House Bill 3 did require a full day pre-K, but there was an offset in the bill to, in terms of the early education allotment to help pay for that. And then under House Bill 3, as you can see, Belton's M&amp;O tax rate would drop to a little over a dollar and nine cents. That was due to some compression that was built into that House bill. Also, there was a, a teacher incentive and compensation component in House Bill 3. It did not have, and this was as of 5/6/2019, so I forgot to point that out earlier or previously. But at that time, it did not have a specified pay raise for anyone. The only requirement in House Bill 3 was that a portion of the increased funding be used for raises, for salary increases. And then gifted and talented, that allotment was repealed in the House, House Bill 3 or the House's version. But I briefly, I talked about the tax rate lowering. There was a provision that if a district wanted to increase the tax rate, they would have to first wait one year, but then they would have to undergo an efficiency audit before seeking voter approval, before going out for that TRE. And then next, there was one major change, which is the creation of the dyslexia allotment and the dual language weights. And they also extended the CTE counts or program to sixth grade because right now CTE, we get funding based on ninth through 12th grade. But the House Bill 3 extended that or lowered it to sixth grade. And then there were some other funding provisions such as the cost of education index being repealed and as well as the staff allotment. And then transportation funding, which hasn't been touched in years, was going to be based on miles instead of linear density. So when the House Bill 3 went to the Senate, it came out looking very different. They submitted their own version of the bill, they meaning the Senate. And there were some key, I just wanted to point out some key financial differences in the Senate's version of House Bill 3. One being that instead of, instead of increasing the basic allotment by $890, the Senate only wanted to, wants to increase it by $740. Also, one major change or difference is that the Senate's version looked at current year property values versus the House's version of keeping the current or the prior year values in determining state funding. That is a, a big difference. And you talked about the salary increases. Like I said, the Senate version has a built-in $5,000 increase for teachers and librarians. But the House version just wants the districts to spend a portion of the gain on salaries. And then property taxes, the Senate would provide a larger decrease in the tax rates. But that decrease is contingent upon, it also includes a property tax revenue cap that's based on inflation. It's also contingent upon the passage of a, of the use of some rainy day funds as well. And then there were some other differences in weights. The gifted and talented allotment was put back in by the Senate. The dyslexia allotment weight was decreased slightly by the Senate, by the Senate. And then the Senate also did not include a school safety allotment that the House had included. And one of the things that significantly impacts us is that, sorry, is that we are really excited about the new instructional facilities allotment. The House Bill version increased the appropriation to 100 million, but the Senate's version left it the same. And as we talked about previously, even though the appropriation for NIFA increased to $1,000 per student, it was only allocated to districts at, at the current level of about $250 simply because there wasn't enough remaining in appropriations. Even with all of that uncertainty, one thing that we are holding true and that we believe is that we are, we're going to move forward with our expenditure budget. And currently in 1819, we're at about 80% of the budget for personnel. And in looking at 1920, even though salaries are still uncertain and they're still pending, we do anticipate to remain within that 80 to 83% range for our salaries. And looking at our campus and department budgets, we still aim to be between 17 and 20% and then fund balance items between 1 and 2% of the pie. So what, what I'm telling you is that we still are maintaining the essence of our budget and our categories. We are not re-engineering anything. We don't anticipate any huge spikes or increases. Even with our salary budget, we anticipate that we will be able to hold true to our category called makeup. category called makeup. Jennifer Ritter just talked to you about the debt service tax rate. I wanted to put this slide in here because it shows that originally we projected we would lower the debt service rate by about two and a half cents. And that was based on a seven and a half percent growth. And then we got preliminary values in and we said, okay, we might, could drop our rate by about five, a little, almost six cents. And then we heard talk with the legislature about increasing the homestead exemption and doing some other things. So we put a model in here to show that if a homestead exemption was increased by 15,000, our debt service tax rate would drop by about three and a half cents. And all in all, this is saying that there's still a great deal of uncertainty. We don't know where we are going to end up, but we are going to do our due diligence and continue to monitor the legislature, their actions, as well as property values. And in August, we will have a clearer picture and bring you back a budget and a tax rate that at that time will be supported by the property values and the legislative outcomes that we, that are in place at that time. So just to recap, again, I know we've used the word uncertainty probably about 10 times or more, but that's where we are right now due to our current legislative session. And largely, in part, due to our revenue and not being, having, having a clear picture about revenue, state funding, it's going to be based on what our legislature does this session, as well as our tax rates. Because M&amp;O as well as debt service tax rates will both be impacted. And then in terms of expenditures, again, the largest portion of our budget payroll is still dependent upon the bills that are going to be passed out of the legislative session. So we are, and that makes it really difficult to determine our budget priorities without being able to forecast our revenue accurately. So all in all, even though we still have some pieces of the puzzle to fill in, we again are determined or we believe that we can maintain some proportionality amongst our categories, both in terms of the revenue as well as our expenditure side. In terms of next steps, we are going to constantly monitor and continue to follow the legislative session and as well as our preliminary values to see where we are, we could possibly end up. And we will adjust our revenue projections as needed. And then once, we are going to review our proposed general fund and child nutrition and debt service budgets and see where we come in with those budgets. And then in July, we anticipate having our certified values. Once we get our certified values, that will be one piece of the puzzle that will be defined for us. And hopefully by that time, we will have some legislative clarity as well. And, and we will have a near final budget review. And then in August, we will adopt the final budget and set the tax rate for the coming year. Are there any questions?
In regards to the House bill that the House has and the Senate, I've been reading a little bit about it. And the thing that seems to be a big deal to me that I don't know that I understand is the, the value of the property taxes, the way the House says the last year's, the Senate says this year's. What negative impact, have you figured out what negative impact that will have on us? Because I read like one of the area districts is like an $18 million impact on them. Have we, have we kind of started planning for that if that does occur?
Well, we have not, I have not personally done that, but we have gotten several versions of runs from our sources, MoK City, the Equity Center, even an LBB run. And the latest version of the run that I saw did not have a significant impact on us. But as, that's something that I can go back and I can definitely look into. But because of the strength and the significant increase in the basic allotment, that helps. That helps offset a lot of the decreases that you, that we would otherwise be negatively impacted by. But I can definitely make a note to go back and, and look at that. Well, it's that windfall that you get or you don't get in terms of the property value growth. For us, I would, I would be, I would be cautious to say that it would, it would hurt us. Because the last run I looked at supposedly took that into consideration and it was not as big of an impact.
Okay, are there any further questions? Thank you, Ms. Lane, we appreciate that.
Thank you.
Okay. At this time, the board will go into a brief closed session, we hope to be brief, Texas Government Code Subchapters D and E to discuss personnel, Texas Government Code Section 551.074. All for being so patient and waiting for us. We've got a little bit of business and then we'll get right on those recognitions. We need to administer the oath of office to Board members Sue M. Jordan, Jeff Norwood, Dr. Rosie Montgomery, and Manuel Alcozzer. We'll just meet, you want us to come down there or you want us to step here? We'll go down there. Okay.
Okay, we're ready. If I can get all of you to raise your right hand, please repeat after me where I say my name, please insert your name. I, Connie Burns. Do solemnly swear
Sow
that I will faithfully execute the duties
Sow
of the Office of School Board Trustee
Sow
for the Belton Independent School District
Sow
of the State of Texas
Sow
and will, to the best of my ability
Sow
preserve, protect, and defend
Sow
the Constitution and laws
Sow
of the United States
Sow
and of this state. So help me God. Congratulations. If I could get you each to sign your oath.
And so just, I will tell you that I'm most excited to be able to serve the citizens of Belton and this community and just, just continue to serve and continue to do the work. At this time, I'll take any comments from any of those who are sworn in with me at this time? Going once? No? It's all good? We're glad to be here, glad to serve. So at this time, our next item on the agenda is reorganization of the board. The floor is open for nominations?
Yes, I would like to nominate Sue Jordan as our president. I'd like to nominate Jeff Norwood to continue as vice president. And I would like to nominate Janet Lee to continue as our secretary. I believe we've got a good thing going and there's no reason for any change this time.
Thank you. Is there a second? Thank you, Dr. Montgomery, appreciate that. All in favor, please raise your hand. You have your board. Thank you. Appreciate that. Wow, that's exciting. So we're getting ready to start our awards and traditionally that we have a big thank you after everybody. So I've asked if I could just go ahead and just tell you parents, thank you for your students. Also, just congratulations to all the award recipients. So excited and proud of you for all your individual achievements. And thank you for the communities that we serve in that support our teachers and our other staff and all the things that we do. So Elizabeth, if you'll get us started with our recognitions. I'm sorry, Josh is going to do it because Elizabeth's over there doing something else. Awesome, Josh, get us started while I make my way to.
Thank you, President Jordan. As you can see, I would say it'd be a bit of an understatement to say we have a few recognitions this evening. It's only our, it's our second meeting in the Pitt and Grefind Arts Center, so we do appreciate parents and siblings and other family members for your patience as we're growing in this facility. Part of the reason we wanted to move to this facility was to accommodate larger crowds like we have today. So first off, we're very proud of our Belton Tigers Special Olympics team who earned 22 medals, including eight first-place gold finishes at the Heart of Texas Area Special Olympics Spring Games held at Connolly High School. Of the over 20 athletes that practiced and participated in the month leading up to the track and field competitions, 14 student athletes returned to Belton with a medal. Individual results include Inez Aguilar with the 50-meter run, first place. Cole Austin, 25-meter walk, second place. Josh Barney, softball throw, second place. Colby Brackett, softball throw, third place. Candace Resher, softball throw, first place. Hunter Busby, 50-meter run, first place. Matty Dollar, 50-meter run, second place. Trey Hearn, tennis ball throw, first place. Thomas Jagler, softball throw, first place. Dylan Jordan, 50-meter run, second place. Michael Lunsford, softball throw, first place. Kelsey Olson, softball throw, first place. Travis Towne, 100-meter run, first place. Tristan, Tristan Villarreal, softball throw, second place. In addition, student athletes that practice as a part of the track and field team included Devlin Fox Hawkins, Mario Ortega, Matthew Ortega, Daniel Smith, Logan White, Lexi White, and Lindsay White. Our student volunteers supported these athletes. There are Cade Elkins, Danielle Graham, Abby Hazelwood, Jack Isaacs, Skylar Isaacs, Liam McCarthy, Kendall Olson, and several Belton Tiger football athletes. The teachers who facilitated these special moments for our students and their families are Erin Allen, Nita Brown, Sabrina Falcon, Lori Fisher, Kristi Nealan, Angie LaBage, Lauren Marks, Haley Steffen, and Felicia Youngblood. Thanks, everybody. And any parents, if you want to get a little closer, feel free. Take your photos.
While they're taking a picture, I'll just, I just want to say how much fun it was to watch these students participate in the track and field events at Connolly. These are some really great students and it was fun cheering for them and celebrating them and congratulations to all of them.
Next, we have Duke TIP, a nonprofit organization dedicated to serving academically gifted and talented students. They work with students, their families, and educators to identify, challenge, engage, and help students reach their highest potential. The organization's talent search program identifies students based on standardized test scores and invites them to take either the ACT or the SAT as seventh graders. This year, 14 Belton ISD students qualified for state recognition by scoring at or above the national average of recent high school graduates on at least one part of the ACT or the SAT. These students are Emily Anderson, Wyatt Butler, Lena Cook, Matthew Herrera, Landon Martenson, Noel Paletti, and Tao Wan from Lake Belton Middle School. Ashutosh Gamand, Panya Murin Gathupap Ramble, Cole Vontz, and Jezebel Vasquez from South Belton Middle School, and Shre Gupta, Erin Hankins, and Diana Williams from North Belton Middle School.
Okay, these are, these are our future National Merit Scholars. And we don't want to forget to point out that these students scored higher than most high school students. And they're middle school students. So that's a really big deal and we're really proud of them.
And speaking of a big deal, Dr. Kinkanen, three of these students from South Belton Middle School, Landon Martenson, Noel Paletti from Lake Belton Middle School, and Jezebel Vasquez, they also qualified this year for grand recognition for earning scores that are approximately equal to the 90th national percentile ranks for college-bound seniors that take the test. What that means is it includes about only 4% of TIP students. So of 46,544 students who took the exams through Duke TIP, only 2,421 were invited to the grand recognition ceremony. Congrats. Recognizing the need to help middle school-level students jumpstart their quest toward higher education, the National Junior Honor Society annually honors 500 exceptional members nationwide with their NJHS Outstanding Achievement Award. North Belton Middle School students are Peta Lemashany, Maya Miller, Emma Salazar Canales, and Hayden Ward were selected as a part of this elite group of middle school students and they will receive a $500 award placed in a college savings account. The North Belton Middle School NJHS advisors are Lori Hobbs, Carolyn Waring, and Tab Lloyd. Congratulations. Rolling along with Texas History Day, the state-level competition affiliated with the National History Day program was held in Austin over the last weekend of April. Middle and high school students from Belton ISD earned special awards and placed in the top three projects from across the state. Belton New Tech High School at Wasco's Emily Olson, Gracie Krieg, Jayla Ward, Sylvia Assunson Crabbe, and Thea Lancaster's senior group performance called Josephine Baker Jazz Cleopatra earned the Willie Lee Gray Award for African-American history. In the senior individual exhibit category, Caroline Mullenbrock sanctified the untold story of triumph over misogyny, earned a regional award, and Aditi Bats, the partition of India, triumph of independence, tragedy of division, placed third in the state for the senior individual website category. Congratulations. And our New Tech sponsors are teachers Tim Potts, Allison Bradburn, and Veronica Smith. In the junior group documentary category, North Belton Middle School students Kalise Kane, Hannah Wood, Madison Floor, and Rebecca McGuire placed third for Before Little Rock: Tragedy in a Small Texas Town. In addition, this project was recognized by the Texas Historical Research Advisors Board with the Best Use of the Texas Archival Collections Award. Congratulations. North Belton sponsor is teacher Elizabeth Hausen. A project must earn a first or second place finish to advance to the National History, History Day contest at the University of Maryland at College Park in June. South Belton Middle School South Belton Middle Schools McKenna Morrow achieved a first-place finish for Junior Individual Website with Finding Family After Slavery. In addition to advancing to nationals, McKenna earned the Willie Lee Gray Award for African-American History. Sponsors from South Belton Middle School are Danielle Connor, Kelsey Reigel, and Robin Burney. Congratulations. We have a group of 11 Belton High School juniors and seniors who were recognized in a special silver courting ceremony held by Temple College on April 17th for completing dual-credit coursework in the Texas Bioscience Institute Middle College Program. These students are Isabella Acker, Jasmine Curly, Dante Denly, Allison Jones, Mackenzie Katzer, Cameron Madden, Kyle Patterson, Cara Polk, Eric Perrier, Basil Wahab, and Austin Woodard. The TBI Middle College Program is a partnership with Temple College that allows qualified Belton ISD students to enroll in rigorous STEM-focused dual-credit coursework in their junior and senior years of high school. All 11 BHS students have also qualified to receive an Associate of Arts degree from Temple College this May. Congratulations. Belton High School senior Mariah Montgomery was honored by the University Interscholastic League as an outstanding performer at the Texas State Solo Ensemble Viola Solo Contest. Of the approximately 100,000 students participating in the regional UIL music contests, and the 25,000 musicians who performed at the contest, only 2% to 3% of the solo performances earned this distinguished honor. BHS Orchestra Director John Fairley presented Mariah with the UIL's medal, which she's wearing this evening, and letter of recognition celebrating this statewide honor at the orchestra banquet last week. And congratulations, Dr. Montgomery. Belton High School band will be represented by 26 students at the UIL Texas State Solo Ensemble Contest at the University of Texas at Austin on June 1st. Students earned the opportunity to participate at the state level by receiving a Division I Superior rating at the Region Eight Solo Ensemble Contest in Temple. In addition to receiving the highest rating available, they also had to receive the rating on the most difficult level of music available to them. Student musicians qualifying for state include Ethan Autry, Maya Borchart, Jasmine Curly, Reagan Day, Michael Eckert, Joshua Fuentes, Clayton Hankins, Nadia Herrera, Alyssa Herring, Riley Jones, Joshua Krieg, Jacob Masters, Lily Miller, Abigail Morgan, Carol Paletti, Ella Poussey, Ethan Rasmussen, Ashley Ray, Emily Rivas, Andy Sebia, Jackson Small, Shania Thomas, Trent Yuluwa, Zane Williams, Aliyah Zeismer, and Ethan Zorns. Congratulations, everyone. We invite parents to move closer for photos, too. State Championships. The Varsity Guard placed 13th in the state in Scholastic A classification. The circuit is comprised of a total of 35 A-class groups from across the state, and only the top 50% advance to state each year. This is the second consecutive year that the Varsity Winter Guard has qualified for state, and they moved up from 18th place last year to 13th this season. State qualifying Winter Guard students include Sebastian Arizmendes, Melanie Bernacki, Cheyenne Burns, Reagan Hart, Sidney Hart, Stacy Holloway, Maggie Main, Kaylin McGeehee, Ashley Minor, Jennifer Mortimer, Haley Musquish, Alejandra Navarete, Monique Parr, Alexi Prado, Alyssa Roker, Leah Seward, Toni Turner, and Ashley White. The Guard program had 22 students in 2016 and had never scored high enough to advance to the Texas State Championships. This year, the Guard program has 44 students with only five seniors graduating, so they say the future is a bright one for them. Congratulations. Members of the Belton FFA chapter have traveled across the state to compete in environmental and natural resource, wildlife, nursery landscape, homesite, poultry, horse, wool, and vet science career development events. In addition to previous district and area contest achievements, Belton FFA teams earned a distinction of state qualifier at each event. As I announce everyone's names, we're going to take one big photo at the end. So we have career development events, building on what is learned in agricultural classes and encouraging members to put their knowledge into practice. More than 15,000 students began the statewide tournament in 28 different events, which reflect classroom instruction and basic technical leadership and interpersonal and teamwork skills. The Belton FFA Wildlife Team of Alex Sodasanti, Lacy Bland, Joseph Knox, and Whitley Jordan were second in district, third in area, and qualified for state after competing on April 23rd at the Welder Wildlife Park in Sutton. On April 25th, Belton FFA placed 12th in the state environmental and natural resource contest held at Tarleton State University. This team had previously qualified as second in district and second in area. Team members include Luke Reed, Isaac Garner, Julie Johnson, Rinar Poff, and Logan Bowler. Also at Tarleton State was Homesite. This team was made up of Sidney Sherwood, Vanessa Aick, Amanda Simpson, and Audrey Rawl. They were second in district and fourth in area. Competing at Texas Tech on April 27th were the Horse Team of Carly Taylor, Emily Millington, Delaney McClanahan, and Claire Kelner, along with the Wool Team of Amanda Simpson, Audrey Rawl, Wesley Baker, and Gavin Lee. The Horse Team was first in district, fifth in area, and 17th in state. The Wool Team was second in district and second in area. A team of Belton FFA students also qualified for state at the Nursery Landscape Career Development Event held at Sam Houston State University on May 3rd. The team of Sarah McKeska, Alexa Parr, Addie Ross, and Micah Page had previously achieved first in district, second in area, and finished in the top 10 at the state competition. On April 28th, the Belton FFA team of Gwen Mahia, Gabby Hansen, Celeste August, and Alyssa Herring also earned the state qualifier distinction at the Vet Science Career Development Event. This team had previously achieved a first in district and sixth in area contests. Along with Vet Science at Texas A&amp;M was the Poultry Team. This team was made up of Dylan Carpenter, Dalton Paulson, Jordan Richards, and Thomas Bowman. They were first in district and fifth in area. Finally, the FFA advisor, Brad Hobbs. Congratulations, everyone.
Everyone will remain where you are so that your parents can take your photo. Don't move too fast. Give it, look forward, there's some photos being taken. There you go. There you go. Thanks, guys. Congratulations.
So we are here to recognize Stormy LeBlanc as our Temple Rotary Educator of the Month. So if Stormy could come on up, and her principal is Judy Schiller, she'll be joining her. Stormy serves as a kindergarten teacher at Lakewood Elementary, and she is in her 10th year in education and her 8th with Belton ISD. Ms. LeBlanc is known for being a cheerleader, as she is always motivated and cheering students on and growing academically, socially, emotionally, and becoming a productive member of her, of their own classroom. She serves as grade-level leader and has been honored with two Big Red Heart Awards and as the Lakewood Elementary Teacher of the Year in '17 and '18. Judy Schiller, principal at Lakewood Elementary, stated, "When you think of the person you would love for your child's first teacher, that person would be Stormy LeBlanc." She is a favorite among all stakeholders at Lakewood, and students continue to refer to her throughout the years as one of their favorite teachers. So congratulations.
Over the last decade, Belton ISD has maintained a steadfast commitment to addressing student safety and well-being in a comprehensive way that integrates several important elements. Alongside important partners, the district seeks continuous improvement for its emergency preparedness to ensure that students attend school in a safe, secure, and inclusive learning environment. Actively involved in both prevention and response measures, Temple Fire and Rescue continues to play an important role in these efforts. As an important resource in training and planning for our staff and students, they support timely and proactive communication practices through their skilled Public Information Officer staff. Beyond their service as a safety resource, Temple Fire and Rescue is often presented, represented at important cultural and community-building events in our district, such as Lakewood's Old Glory Day, and Fall Frenzy, and Tarver Elementary Career Day, and they have even provided a keynote speaker at the West Belton TB Harris Senior Banquet. In recognition of this important, ongoing partnership, Temple Fire and Rescue is the Big Red Community Partner for May, accepting the award. This month, Temple Fire and Rescue Chief Mitch Randalls, Community Education Public Information Officer, Thomas Peckhal. Thank you very much for your service. And that'll do it for recognitions.
Next item on our agenda is public comments. Connie, do we have anyone signed up? No, ma'am. Okay. Moving on, the next item on our agenda is the consent agenda. Does any board member have any item they'd like to pull for further discussion?
Yeah, I'd like to pull Item K, the resolution of hazardous traffic conditions, just for further discussion.
Any others? Okay, the consent agenda is approved minus Item K. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda minus Item K? That's a motion by Mr. Jeff Norwood. Is there a second? Mr. Tyus Haggard? Thank you. All in favor? Okay, that is approved. So for Item K, Dr. Cannon, remind me, is that something we discuss at a different board meeting?
Yeah, so I think we need to know what Chris wants, but basically, I think Dr. Muller will come up and review the item and answer your questions.
Yeah, I mean, I wanted to pull it, I know this has come up, you know, student safety, bus routes, all kind of, it's come up several times over the last year, and so I really thought, you know, it'd probably be in everybody's best interest to actually hear, you know, kind of what the conversation is around it. So I don't, I don't have any hidden agenda, I just want to make sure everybody hears it.
Okay, well, I can give you a short, kind of overview of hazardous routes. In the state of Texas, school districts can choose to transport students from the door, their door, to the school, but they won't be funded in terms of anything that's inside a two-mile radius within the school. The only exception to that two-mile radius is hazardous route. Hazardous route can be identified, it has to be identified by a resolution that is approved by the board, and so that's what you have before you. I have got a few slides I'd like to just kind of walk you through. This first slide is just pulled off of our website, and because some of these hazardous routes are a little bit hard to understand. But what's shown here in the red are the current boundaries for our elementary. And so you can see Pertle's boundary is shown there in the red outline. Let me see if I can kind of ride around, around here for this current year. And so there are students that are in the Pertle Zone, or the attendance boundary of Pertle, who currently get to Pertle, they're inside the two miles, but they're allowed to be transported because their route is hazardous. Pertle this year kind of has a north-south zone, next year it's shown in the purple. So it's kind of an east-west zone. You will see that there's a notch up here, kind of in the, I guess, the northeast, let me see if I can kind of outline it. I don't know if you can see this cursor. But right in here, there's a notch out. Those students currently go to Tarver, and they, they are transported under a hazardous route scenario. One of the changes is to move that area from being hazardous route to being walkers or, you know, non-bus riders, because for the upcoming school year, they will no longer go to Tarver, they'll go to Pertle. So this change in attendance boundaries drives a couple of the, of the bigger changes for the hazardous routes. So here you show, it shows the actual streets, and so if you look up here, kind of bound by Hogan Road, over, almost to P Ridge, right about in here, all of these students were hazardous route. I'm not sure, can you see this? I guess you can. All these students in here were hazardous route, transported to Tar, to Pertle. For the upcoming year, all of these students are within the two miles, and they will go to Charter Oak, which is located right there where the cursor shows. So that's one change. Another change is right here along Poison Oak Road, because there are some, a few students, not very many, who live along Poison Oak Road. Because there is no safe walking path, those students would need to be transported, so that would still be declared a hazardous route. So those are two of the changes. A third change, which is probably the more complex change that's being presented here, is over here north of Tarver. So again, Pertle's zone changed from kind of a north-south zone to an east-west zone. Primarily what changes is over here where Tarver intersects Old Waco Road. There are three neighborhoods. There are three neighborhoods in there that were zoned to Tarver that are now going to be zoned to Purtle. When they're zoned to Purtle, because there is a sidewalk that exists from down Tarver, all the way from South P Ridge, all the way over to Old Waco Road, they have a safe walking path. So, the neighborhoods of Meadow Brook, Freedom Valley, and the Vineyard, who were transported to Tarver, will no longer be transported, they will now go to Purtle, and they will not be considered hazardous, so they'll be walkers. Right north of here, right in here, Connor Park, that will be considered hazardous, because there's no way to safely leave those neighborhoods right around there and get to the safe-walking sidewalk. That will still be considered hazardous. Fourth change is down here at South, South P Ridge, right in this area. These students will go to their zone to Purtle. They will not be considered walkers, because there is no safe-walking path from that area to Purtle Elementary. And that subdivision is called Southern Draw, it's right there south of the, South P Ridge. And then a fourth change, or a fifth change, I lost count, is right around Chisholm Trail, and there's some housing addition coming to the west, and immediately to the, to the north of Chisholm Trail, those students would be considered walkers. And currently, most of, in fact, all of Chisholm Trail, I believe, is considered hazardous, but we're clarifying and indicating that those housing additions just adjacent to the school, to the west and to the north, would not, not be considered hazardous, instead would be walkers.
They have a sidewalk all the way up.
They do have a sidewalk.
Through that neighborhood to Chisholm, Chisholm Trail.
And then for Leon Heights, there is one, one small area that needs to be identified as hazardous, and it's this area that's kind of shown here at Montrose, and it's bounded by Sparta and 317, it's right in here. And the reason that is hazardous is because it's not possible, there's no sidewalk to navigate down past Oak Village Shopping Center, and so that needs to be considered hazardous. And with these hazardous routes, then we can provide transportation to these students, and we can collect, we can report these for state funding. So, with that, I'll entertain any questions.
What's the plan for communication of these changes to the families that are impacted one way or the other?
Well, we've indicated in the board item that we will be sending out letters to all the, all the parents who are affected.
I think we'll push some information out in early August, too, as well through our Communications Department, to make sure parents know to check their bus routes, and because some routes are changing due to our new attendance boundaries and hazardous routes, so we'll do a, we'll do a big push when we get close to the start of school as well.
Yes, but early on, we had planned to go ahead and tell those that had been riding a bus that, if they become walkers, that they would no longer be receiving bus transportation. But that coincides, for the most part, with changes in schools as well.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Not, then we'll go ahead and vote. The recommendation before us is to approve the resolution regarding hazardous traffic conditions. Resolution is presented, is there a motion to approve? Mr. Flor, thank you for your motion, is there a second? Janet Lee, thank you for the second. All of, all in favor of the motion, please raise your hand. That passes unanimously. Okay. So, the next item that we'll take up would be the superintendent's report.
Okay, well, we're at the end of the school year, but we're not done, and we're still working to prepare for our summer programs, which begin on June the 3rd. And so I wanted to mention those to you. We have 5th and 8th grade remediation for the Student Success Initiative, which will be June 10th through the 26th, that's Monday through Thursday. As we do every year, we will offer extended-year services for bilingual and special education students. Those classes will occur in June and July, however, special ed goes a little bit longer, running all the way through the end of July. At the high school level, we have summer school for acceleration and/or credit recovery, and that will be held June 3rd through 20th, the 20th. We're also offering this year our third Summer Adventures in Learning, the Sale Program for Miller Heights and Southwest students, and that will be held at Southwest Elementary. You may have seen some communication about Camp Invention, which was offered for the first time last summer, that will run June 3rd through 7th at New Tech. We are offering, continuing to offer GT Summer Camps, June 10th through the 21st, those are one-week programs. And then we have 5th and 8th Grade Star and EOC retesting occurring during the week of June 24th through, the week of June 24th through the 27th, and with some review sessions being held the week before. And in addition to all of that, we are providing summer meals through our Child Nutrition Department at Miller Heights Elementary, and Southwest Elementary, and at the Belton Christian Youth Center, as we have done for many years. And so, it's a busy time, we may be finishing the school year, but we're also gearing up for our summer programs, and I just want to thank everyone who has been busy organizing those activities and preparing for our students that we'll be working with this summer. Also want to mention that we have summer activities on the website, including summer camps, we have many athletic summer camps that are posted on the website for our families, and so those are always a great thing for our students to participate in.
Dr. King Cannon, which, who is welcome to partake in the summer meals?
Summer meals, I believe, are 18 and under, those are free meals, and those are held...
BISD students?
They can be any student 18 or under, and they do not have to be Belton ISD students. So, anyone who shows up will be fed, is my understanding. I'm looking for some help, but I think that's correct. They're shaking their head, yes. Yes, I believe so. Any other questions about summer programs, summer meals? There's a flyer out on summer meals, we'll continue to communicate that. I know we've included it in our information to our campuses, who are pushing that out as well, and we'll do that at the district level. We've talked a lot about the legislative session tonight, so I'll try not to repeat too much, but we're almost to the end of the session, and we might be getting closer to the approval of a school finance bill, or we might not. It depends on what happens over the next couple of weeks, but House Bill 3 is the foundation for the school finance bill, and it has some similarities and some major differences between the House and the Senate. You heard about some of those issues this evening, tax compression, revenue caps, along with teacher pay raises, are some of the most important areas of discussion. However, it's a lengthy bill with many programs and areas addressed, from pre-K funding to performance-based bonuses, so we didn't cover all of those this evening. We did talk about the Senate wanting a $5,000 across-the-board pay raise for teachers and librarians, which is about $4 billion. And, as you know, the House Bill provided discretion in terms of how to use the funding for salaries, and that's something we certainly advocate for, so that we can put the money in the areas where we need the help and the resources the most. So, we'll continue to watch that. I think Jennifer pointed out the new instructional facilities allotment, in the House version is increased from $25 million to $100 million, which is really good for fast-growth school districts like Belton ISD, especially when you're building and opening new schools. And you've heard me say that means about $2 million, could mean about $2 million for Belton ISD with the opening of Charter Oak and Lake Belton High School. The Senate version does not include that increase, so it would remain at the $25 million. Something I observed or noticed today when I was looking at the differences between the two bills, and that I really appreciated, is that the Senate version extends eligibility for pre-K to our educators, and that would be a really nice incentive for our teachers to be able to have free pre-K for their children. And as you know, pre-K is a program that you have to qualify for based on income or English language proficiency or military. And then finally, I wanted to mention that the Senate added an amendment to the bill to take away our ability as a District of Innovation to start before the 4th Monday in August, and that's something that the tourism industry pushes for every time, and we are a District of Innovation, and we have been starting before the 4th Monday of August. However, I will tell you, we were not planning on doing so in 2020, because we will need the additional time for the opening of the high school. But we still like to have the flexibility, if we could, in the future, so we'll be watching that as, as well. And so, still differences between the House and the Senate, and the bill is now with the Joint Committee and Conference Committee, and who will hash it out this week and next. And so, we're hopeful that they meet the deadline, that we can get it signed, and not have to go into a special session, because as you've heard, it certainly impacts our ability to plan for next school year in terms of salaries and our budget. So, time will tell, over the next couple of weeks, where we land. Next week, we will have our open house at Charter Oak Elementary on, that will be on Thursday at 6 o'clock PM, that's May 23rd, and that is an opportunity for the students and parents who will be a part of the Charter Oak Elementary, to have an opportunity to tour the new school, and get to see what it looks like, and build some excitement, and meet the teachers and administrators. We don't have any special activities planned, other than some pre-K, or, excuse me, kindergarten roundup at that same time, but other than that, it's pretty much a come-and-go, check out the new school, which is really exciting. Prior to that, on Tuesday morning, May the 21st, at 9 o'clock, we will host some elected officials and community leaders, along with the media, and give them an opportunity to tour the school, and I believe we might have a few students there at that time as well. So, watch for that information to come out, Elizabeth, it will be pushing that out this week, as we get ready for those events. And then, finally, just end-of-year activities, we, Sue has a number of announcements this evening for the calendar that she's prepared to share with you. Of course, we're pushing towards graduation on May 30th. I keep sending you calendar invites, I know that may be annoying, but I appreciate your patience. It's a busy time for the school year, lots of activities, and so you select what's important to you, what you can attend, and certainly, I know you can't be at all of those events, but come to whatever you like, and as much as you want, and let me know if you have questions about any of those activities.
Certainly appreciate the calendar invite, that helps with planning for your personal and business schedules, so thank you.
Yeah, try to keep it together, you're welcome. And then lastly, I'll let Sue do all of the other activities when she does the calendar, but I wanted to mention that the girls' softball team is headed into the fourth round of playoffs this week, and I think that's a really big deal. That starts on Wednesday evening at Texas A&amp;M, and second game is Thursday evening, I'm looking at my, yep, and then if we, if we have to go to game three, that will be Friday at Bryan High School. So, we're excited for our Lady Tigers, and we know they're going to win, right? Keep going, we want to keep going and get to the state level. Is this our, I believe this is our first time to get to the fourth round, or maybe...
In three years.
In three years.
We've lost the fourth round.
So, big deal, and that's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, well, thank you, lots of things going on. Our next item on the agenda is to consider, discuss, and take appropriate action regarding the employment of administrative employees, and Mr. Todd Schiller is going to give us that information.
Yeah, I want to start and with two principal recommendations, and then I will pass it to Todd. But this evening, we would like to recommend Sandy Garrett as the principal of our DAEP. Would you stand, Sandy? And be, come stand with Todd and be recognized. Sandy has been with Belton ISD for 15 years, and we appreciate her service. She's been at our Belton Junior High School back in the day, and moved over to Lake Belton Middle School, has served at Belton High School as a teacher, an instructional facilitator, and for the last year, has been an assistant principal at Belton High School, which is a really hard duty, and we appreciate her service there. She is, has a master's degree in her principal certification from Shriners University, and she's a UMHB grad as well. We're really proud of her and appreciate her willingness to step up and take on this challenging position. Thank you, Sandy. Yeah, appreciate you.
Thank you.
I'd also like to recommend Brooke Itz, and I'm looking for Brooke, there she is, to be the principal at Tarver Elementary, and Brooke has been with us for eight years. She has 14 years of experience in education, she taught for us at South Belton Middle School, and she has been an assistant principal for four years at Southwest Elementary. She has a bachelor's degree from Texas State University and a master's of education, educational administration, from Texas A&amp;M University, Central Texas, and she is ready to step up and lead at Tarver Elementary, and we're really excited for her. Thank you, Brooke.
Congratulations to both of you on your new roles. We look forward to what you're going to bring to each of those campuses, I know that you all are going to do great, so thank you for stepping up and accepting the challenge.
All right, I have a couple to present as well, and I'll just ask them to stand up when I call their name. Edgar Miranda. Is Edgar here? Edgar is assistant principal at Lake Belton Middle School, as a recommendation for him tonight. He's been a teacher at Lake Belton Middle School for three years, been a high school teacher, and his, in his seventh year in education, all of those here at Belton ISD. He's got his master's of education from Lamar University, bachelor's of science from Charlton, Charlton State University, and we're excited to have him. Next, I'll mention Ty Patrick, and I'll try to control Sam's excitement back here as well. Ty Patrick, we're recommending him for assistant athletic director and defensive coordinator. He's already hit the ground, I've seen him at a number of events already, master's degree in PE from Charlton State University in Stevensville, bachelor of science from Charlton State as well, and has been defensive coordinator in district since 2006. He's been in positions in Midlothian ISD, Mansfield, Keller ISD, Plano ISD, Denton ISD, and he comes to us from Flower Mound, and we're excited for him as well. And last, I'll mention Megan Crook, she's not on the board report, because she's a transfer, so there's no change in contract, but I will mention Megan Crook as well, and she has, moving from assistant principal again from the high school to Belton New Tech, been with the district since 2002, has a bachelor's degree from West Kentucky University, Lamar University, with her master's degree, 17th year in the district, and 22 total years in education, so. Those are the recommendations.
Okay, any questions or comments on that? Any further discussion? Well, is there a motion to approve as recommended? Thank you, Mr. Taggart, is there a second? Thank you, Mr. Norwood. All, he's looking at me. All in favor of the motion, please raise your hand. That passes unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Schiller. Alrighty then. Next item on our agenda is a campus culture spotlight of Belton High School by Dr. Warren. Welcome.
So, our final spotlight for the...
So, our final spotlight for the 2018-2019 school year is on Belton High School, our largest campus in the district, as you can see by the numbers here. At Belton High School, Ms. Ross and her staff decided to pay a little closer attention to campus climate. They wanted to really focus on the use of respectful language, so that students and adults would feel more included in the Belton High School community. In so doing, they charged their No Place For Hate group to provide a campus-wide activity that focused on increasing awareness of the unintended impact of too often-heard phrases. And so as you look at these particular messages that are on there, those words that are sometimes casually stated, and without the intent to harm, often do harm. And the goal of this particular No Place For Hate activity was just to bring a level of awareness and mindfulness, so that students are really paying attention to what they're saying, and how that impacts their peers. Additionally, students express their gratitude to custodians, that thank-you banner there, some of the unsung heroes, whose efforts contribute to the general feel of the campus, and part of the climate as well. And then that photo on the bottom right of the screen, there were several displays from art students, these particular creative expressions allowed a wide range of students to have their talents acknowledged. So again, making sure that every student feels connected, and truly a part of that overall Belton High School community. And with this last presentation, this last spotlight focus on the efforts of our campuses, we've seen how all campuses are integrating multiple resources, multiple programs, like No Place For Hate, to provide safe, inclusive learning environments for all of our Belton ISD students. Any questions? Thank you.
I want to make a comment on the thank-you banner for the custodians. I think that's so important, for our schools to be clean, for our children, and sometimes high schools, because of the traffic in high schools, if there, if the special care isn't given, can, cannot be that way. And I've visited a lot of high schools, and some of you've heard me tell my story, I've been all over, in gymnasiums and restrooms across the area when my daughter was playing sports. And we have the cleanest schools in Belton ISD, and we really appreciate our employees who take care of that. And so for you to honor Jill, the custodians in that way, and have the kids honor them, is really fantastic. So thank you for that. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Dr. King Cannon. Next item on our agenda, or, does any board member have any issue or concern for future agenda or administrative reports? I'll start it here, nope. Okay, let's identify some future events. May 19th at 2:00, Speculare, that's one week earlier this year. The next item is going to be May 20th, that's the Belton High School Senior Scholarship Awards at the Belton Performing Arts Center. On Tuesday, May 21st at 9:15, we have the BHS Senior Walk, followed by awards at 10:30. Also, on May 21st at 5:30, we've got New Tech's Senior Scholarship Awards, that'll be held at South Belton Middle School. On Wednesday, May 21st at noon, Teacher of the Year Luncheon, June, May 22nd at 12:00 PM, is that what I said? May 22nd at 12:00 PM, Teacher of the Year Luncheon at Harris Community Center. Okay. May 24th at 8:30, Miller Heights Proud to Be an American Day, that's always a lot of fun, love getting out there, walking the neighborhoods with the kids. Monday, May 27th, that's a bad-weather day, and also Memorial Day holiday. And then on Wednesday, May 29th at 8:45 AM is New Tech Senior Walk. And then we have two graduations. On May 30th, we've got New Tech graduating at 2:00 PM, and Belton High graduating at 7:00. And then in June, June 12th through the 15th, the board will be at the Tasby SLI in San Antonio for annual training, and then our next regular board meeting will be June 17th. And that's all I have for future events. At this stage, we are adjourned.